Okay, welcome everyone, audience member, council members. This is a special meeting of the wall municipal advisory council. We're holding it on April twentieth of two thousand and twenty-three here at the post lax support district is the Bill Plack Training Center. Um, we're calling a meeting to order at six oh six P M. Everybody's got a copy of the agenda. There's agendas there if anybody needs them. Um, introductions, you'll see that I took up the suggestion and I made name placards like we used to have. So if anyone else wants to introduce themselves any further, they're welcome to, but everybody should be identified nicely like we used to do. Um, next, we have public input on non agenda items. Any public input on something other than that we have on the agenda?
Chair, before we get started here, can I make an announcement that we would like people to speak up clearly when they talk? Because this is not the most powerful microphone. It's what we have used right now. Maybe we'll improve that, but we've found enough time to do anything about this since last meeting. So the microphone's a little weak, so if people could just speak up, that'll help. Thank you.
Okay, Mary, you're sat here too. Any audience members? Looks like, yeah, um, out there. And I just mentioned the audience. Okay, so Mary is. So, um, we'll get to our action item, which is a G Mac resolution encouraging Caltrans pursue modifications to the Wall Street's gate ATP grant application. Um, I'd like to start off, um, our action item with the presentation. Um, it's a short nine slide presentation, including the alt five exhibit drawings that everybody has seen and sent everybody. And then we introduced at the April sixth meeting. Um, after I've made this presentation, members of the public will have three minutes each to address the presentation. On and on. And then we as a council will initiate our own discussion. Um, so we'll try to keep that five minutes each. Okay, so, um, why don't I start with presentation? Um, so this is our G Mac special meeting. Why are we here? So, um, streetscape has been in design since nineteen ninety-five. Alt five is the final culmination of all that effort. We're here to endorse this as a concept, so detailing, so detailed planning and funding can continue. The California Transportation Commission, C P C, approved multimillion dollars in funding. The grant is tied to alternative five, which allows minor tweaks, but not major changes. The G cap committee unanimously unanimously endorsed all five, adding landscaping and the left turn lane at Ocean Drive. Right, David made it. Thanks for your earlier. The streetscape committee recommends encouraging Caltrans to move forward. So what does all five include? All five meets all requirements. Could you go to the next slide? I'm sorry. What does all five include? All five means all requirements of the wall town plan and local postal plan. And these include sidewalks and bike lanes for safety and encourages tourism was already active transportation program elements. Landscaping along sides of Highway one and in center islands reflecting wall of natural beauty. Center left turn lane to minimize accidents, ease congestion, ease business access. Crosswalks with in-ground flashing lights, most with landscape islands. Project to include southbound left turn lane at Ocean for safety. So, um, next slide. So we'll start with E one. That's at the southern entrance, Wallala. So as we know, landscaping is required in the wall town plan, local postal plan. Uh, landscaping on the median and road sides were designed by Caltrans landscape architect. Caltrans parking area turns one way north to south with diagonal parking. I mean, you can come in from the north course two and landscaping has been added, landscaping strip. A safe turning radius has been verified for all vehicles by Caltrans engineers for each intersection. Pedestrian islands add visual variations to the center lane, guide motorists to the traffic lanes. And then the crosswalk that has been added from Walla off trail to the community center. Next slide, please, Tom. The E two slide, exhibit two is from midtown at the Sunstrom Post Office driveway to the Surf Motel. Now, this is the narrowest section of the project. It's approximately fifty-eight feet in some parts. Uh, the Caltrans traffic study found it the most congested with N curb paths and forty possible turns. Alt five crosswalks at the Walla Hotel, the Breakers and Surf Market. And the other crosswalk on this slide is from the Chevron to the Surf Hotel where there's access to the Walla off trail. Uh, Caltrans landscaping plan retains the hedge by the wall hotel, as you'll note. Or actually by the Breakers Hotel on the west side of the highway there. And adds curb strips where the right of way with the mall, which is like, I see a little bit before the Surf Motel there and a little bit in front of the Walla Hotel. Okay, that completes that slide. Next slide, please. This we're referring to is the E B slide. This is from uptown to the, uh, the circle tell to Ocean Drive. Um, this was similar to the alt four A we had, which had three lanes with interim parking. And then later convening or converting to a center lane. Uh, the center lane here in this area supports eight driveways, approximately twenty businesses. And is required by the wall town plan, local postal plan. Uh, central island landscaping reflecting wall scenic nature. It guides and slows southbound cars. Includes a south or includes a south, uh, crosswalk at the south side of ocean connecting on the western sidewalk from Cypress Village, Redwood Coast, um, medical services and on up the hill there, et cetera, et cetera. All businesses are up there. On Ocean Drive, uh, we're right here in the churches. Um, the Caltrans landscaping plan preserves the hedgerow by the sea cliff and the tree at the northeast corner that, uh, we all cherish there, right? And it adds the curvilinear sidewalk at the, on the west side from the corner of ocean down to the driveway and beyond. So, uh, the fourth and final, uh, Caltrans slide, please, Tom. That would be north of ocean. And this is the, the real important slide that we all have been trying to, uh, see that Caltrans includes. And that is the, um, left hand turn or pocket at Ocean Drive from Highway one to Ocean Drive. So the left turn lane was added, added to request of the wall cap of the G cap committee. Required whether the law town plan or the local postal plan. Caltrans engineers confirmed that fire and E M T vehicles would have proper turn radius. Note that the left turn lane requires a center island on the south side of ocean, as you saw on the prior slide. It includes crosswalks on all sides of the intersection with flashing lights. Improves pedestrian access and safety. Uh, Caltrans landscaping plan includes a curb strip by the Shamus Enterprises Restaurant, also known as the Old Daytona building there. Okay, so that concludes the four slides from Caltrans that have been introduced to us. Next slide, please. So all five, it reflects strong community support in the two thousand and twenty survey that Caltrans did. Three lanes through town interim parking lane and four A becomes the center lane. Extensive landscaping throughout town. Off, uh, crosswalks with warning lights in the sidewalks and bike lanes throughout, which is what the A T P program is all about. So we've received additional support already from several Haver one property business owners. They've pledged support to all five. Uh, Cypress Village homeowners associations supports all five. I spoke today with, um, Ocean View Estates, the Mobile Home Park owner and some residents. They support all five. Same wall group supports all five, representing sixteen hundred and seventy-five residents and visitors. Next slide, please. So, uh, frequently asked questions that we feel will the center lane encourage speeding? No, with five crosswalks, flashing lights, speed warning signs and landscape islands, traffic will slow down. Without a center lane, there's increased risk of rear end crashes, more congestion and swerving out of the lane. Get around, folks. With all five, will all five be good for business? Yes. Landscaping sidewalks and subtle engineering will encourage motorists to slow down and take a deeper look at Walla. With six hundred plus off highway spaces, they'll find it easier to stop and walk around. Do we need the center lane from church to ocean? Yes, this is required in the wall town plan, local postal plan for good reasons. There are ten driveways there with forty turn options. They support about twenty businesses. And with the southbound left related ocean, there was a need for a center lane on the south side of it. Is there a plan to maintain land landscaping? Yes, G Mac, myself included, will invite community groups, business owners, volunteers, possibly G S, D C S E to help. Caltrans may also help with design and initial maintenance. The G T P, the wall town plan specifies plants will be close to the ground with common native species that are drought tolerant and require a little maintenance. And, um, the last slide, please. So the conclusions, um, all five. All five ends thirty plus years of discussion over four concepts in streetscape. It includes features approved by town in Caltrans's two thousand and twenty town hall survey. It is consistent with the town plan in the two thousand and nineteen environmental impact study. The coastal commission, M cog and Caltrans all approved, all endorsed, let me say, all five. And the G cap members in unanimously approved all five. So thanks, that includes my presentation. And at this point, um, we'll hear from our public and, um, give you three minutes and, uh.
Can we ask some questions before? Or are you?
Well, we'll get right to that, Kevin. The, as I, I, I was saying, doing that public.
I thought it would be played that you allowed questions from the council on the presentation, then after that. But whatever, whatever the chair would like to do.
We've done it both ways, and that might be my mistake over the years, but, um, I was looking at bylaws and correct me if I'm wrong, Henry, but I think you need to go out in the public and then we bring it back to the council. I pulled an excerpt from, um, bylaws. And, um, it said, members of the public, uh, three minutes, they address us with a full council and then, um, the public, after public comments were heard, council initiated some discussions. And our bylaws. Do you see, Henry?
So that public is, but question time, yeah.
Um, I would, I was just waiting for a little bit, but.
Yeah, our introduction, um, uh, pretty much the diversity of things, um, I'm going. The president after the very council. Questioning, this is mostly fair enough, uh, applicant.
So that's why I was sort of, that, or audience. So if you'd like to address this on the, on the presentation?
John Bauer. I think we have close to twelve or thirteen businesses that are valid on our property. Um, you all know that the one that would hurt the worst from lack of parking on the street would be the surf center or a surf market. And until we can fix that, um, it's very difficult to try to support a plan which takes our on-street parking. And I, I know you guys worked many years trying to get this thing in place, or it looks like many people, um, are in support of it, and there are some that are not. Um, those that are not, I don't hear their question. So I guess it's really hard to say who they are, you know, because they're not here. Um, I feel myself that we need to pick up the parking that's being consumed by the streetscape. Some places have, and I, I don't know that I can supply that kind of parking at the surf center in a complete renovation of the facility. That's going to cost millions of dollars, not available goods. When the streetscape occurs, we're going to see a loss of parking in front of her. Of close to twenty parking thing of which it has a point. That particular scenario would destroy the if we can't get parking back in place. Um, I know that, um, that some of the, of folks in the business, um, feel as though they can survive the shame. My feelings are every town up and down the coast has on-street parking. Why shouldn't we be different and lose our on-street park? Um, how are we going to replace? How are you folks going to help us? How's Caltrans? Because I don't care what you say, eventually there will not be enough parking. More, there's more visitors coming for the facilities out on the river. And, um, those of us that work in town and want to come through and stop for a meal or buy some groceries. I don't know how many of you look up and down the street. Um, I've been hoping to have parking for longer vehicles. I don't see it happening, definitely not happening across from the community center. There's not enough room there. And if you look at contractors in town and the tree work folks, they all have a trailer. They can't park in a standard parking place. There are very few unmarked or areas where a longer, may I finish?
Go ahead, finish up, Tom, in a couple, another minute, uh, max, okay?
Thank you. Uh, there are very few places for these contractors to park. And many of them work day and night and don't understand what the ramification of the true escape truly is. And I just don't know how we get there. That we've, we've changed a lot, our communities changed a lot. The kind of work that contractors are doing, the tree work that's going on, um, the fire prevention work that's going on. All of this changes the way we drive up and down the street. Okay, thanks for your time.
We want to give you as much time as you need. Okay, um, anybody else in the audience, uh, um, Mary is the speaker as a private citizen and then what do you, okay? Okay, go ahead. Can you hear us?
Uh, yeah, I think you said go ahead, right?
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay, I've got a three minute clock here. I'll start it in a second here. I'll just call my notes. Okay. Good evening. I, you know, I think Robert summed up this issue very nicely, and I agree with everything in his presentation. Uh, I'm here representing the one thousand six hundred and ninety-four people who thus far signed the save Wallala petition asking Caltrans to build this project by following the Walla town plan. I'm pleased to say, say, Walla is strongly endorses alternative five for this reason. But I'd like to take a minute to speak to a couple of ideas that came up at the last meeting. Is this being rushed? No, not really. The elements of this design have been endorsed by a majority of the community for three decades, over and over again. It is the core of the town plan and Shrinaton County building codes and part of the state coastal plan. The central elements were affirmed in the Caltrans Town Hall in two thousand and eighteen, written into the Caltrans Environmental Report of two thousand and nineteen, affirmed again in the Caltrans survey of two thousand and twenty. When some wanted parking, more parking in the plan, this council tried to incorporate some interim parking, but the coastal commission said no. More than ninety percent of the shoppers in Walla already park in the six hundred place spaces off highway. And there's potential for a couple of hundred more. To be sure, there is some urgency in approving this concept, a multimillion dollar grant hangs in the balance. As Caltrans and M cog have warned repeatedly, if Walla doesn't adopt a workable plan, it will lose money. It will lose that money to another community, millions of dollars. You're not being asked to redesign anything here, but to affirm that all five meets the county requirements, and it does. This is similar to approving a coastal application to build a new house. Even if you have some reservations about the design, you should vote yes, because the applicant in this case, Caltrans, has met all the code requirements. I heard the idea of having only two lanes on the north end of town. When we know the law requires three and three will be needed to add the southbound left turn lane at Ocean. That's not a good idea. The committee rejected this idea. In the short term, you might move some landscaping from the center islands to the side. But when the left turn lane is added, and it will be added, that would be ripped out to make room. So I ask you tonight to endorse this plan once and for all. This is a very good plan. Even if you would disagree with some part of the design, vote yes, because it fulfills all the requirements of the majority of this community has wanted for decades. Again, it exceeds the legal requirements G Mac members are sworn to uphold. So please come together tonight and show unity on all five. Thank you, and I'll remain here if council members have any questions during their discussion.
Okay, Tom, thank you. Um, the council. Mary, I'm sorry. So this can, I want to have you go first before Tom.
As a resident of the community, I really like the plan. Uh, especially not parking on high rate, it's exceedingly dangerous. Try to pull out into profit with a huge enormous truck in on both sides of your life. And you can't see around them. You don't get out into traffic to do that for anybody to get here. So thank you for eliminating on-street parking so that people can be a lot safer coming out and going into driveways. I really am disappointed that there's not a road that's out. It really does need it. It's been eliminated. It would slow everybody down half a mile. Um, uphill for you instead of going forty-five, you're doing like fifty-five and hit town at fifty-five. You hit that roundabout at fifty-five, you know, that nobody's going to do it. And every time I'm going to the port right, there it is, slows me down, it's everybody that I have to deal. And you don't, it's hard when you get a, also why can't you say that?
Okay, thank you, Mary. Okay, so as per our bylaws, each council member has their time to give input on the presentation and on their ideas and feelings about this. So who would like to start with that? Go ahead, Melissa.
It is my part of best all of your topics. But my heart is going to move forward with this, uh, the concept.
Is that it? Okay, thank you. Um, should we go with, anybody else want to volunteer? Should we write down the list line here or?
Yeah, it's the, uh, the plan is so, so much better than what we have uh, and it should be for everybody, but with transportation, we use. And I want to see this get done so badly. Uh, so I'm hoping we can.
Ready? Thank you, three. Um, David?
Sure. Prepared some remarks and copy for members of the council. Finish this. Reading it into the record.
When I'm done, I'll refer to some of the slides, Robert, in your presentation, I find some of the certain to be to depart from facts as I can, but I'll read my remarks first. I've handed out for the record a memorandum to members of the council, uh, addressed to council members, uh, read it. Purposes of the memo are to inform and encourage the law municipal advisory council to number one, consider operational safety for all travel modes, lifecycle efficiency and cost effectiveness of infrastructure improvements and civic place making when advising Caltrans configuration of features within state route one right of way. For two, avoid making recommendations that would conflict with the objectives of the active transportation program, referred to as A T P. Uh, would otherwise ask Caltrans to implement project features that conflict with applicable operational safety guidelines and expose the state liability for unnecessary and avoidable hazard and would jeopardize implementation of the downtown streetscape enhancement project. Verded that is project on the current schedule and within the funded budget. And number three, make recommendations that are consistent with A T P objectives and align departure current A T P grant application to features that advance A T P objectives, operational maintenance, safety and efficiency and civic place making. First of all, I want to acknowledge a few things. The project is approaching a crucial milestone in the Caltrans project delivery process. Called project approval and environmental doctrine, right, for you as P A E D. Project scheduled date for P A E D is July thirteenth this year. It will conclude the years of creative thinking, heartfelt debate, all intentioned compromise and tenacious commitment. Milestone also marks the transition from generalized evaluation to specific and detailed investigation, analysis and design that are essential to delivering a function, cost effective, public capital improvement on schedule and within budget. Yes, ma'am.
We're talking about the resolution. I don't understand anything.
Okay, uh, in summary, I'm going to present, I am presenting, attempting to present my position in opposition to that. I have, uh, four, just over four pages.
What?
This is a lot, this is a lot for us to compare here.
I mean, it'll take about the same time, Robert, at your presentation.
Of course.
Well, that's going to be by law.
Uh, by law, you don't take five minutes.
Oh, I thought I heard.
If, this should not be a little bit. If, this should not be limited. If, if I ran more than five minutes, I think we can do that. Um, let me look again where I caught that in the bylaws.
Okay, I think that's absolutely fair.
Yeah. Um, go ahead, David. We wanted to limit it to five minutes, I think I said at the beginning of the meeting, but no, I had no idea. Would it be nice to get this beforehand so we could have read this, you know?
I would have liked to have had the slide beforehand so I could have read it too.
Okay.
But, you know, things happen.
Okay, read it then, please.
Any other questions before I continue? Okay, project is one of the main expressions of the Wallala Town Plan, which is chapter four fourteen of the local coastal program adopted by Mendocino County. Town plan was concluded on January twenty-two thousand and two through a community-based general planning process. Aspects of the town plan that are salient to state Route One recognize the highway's central role in defining Wallala as a civic place while supporting a regional and local travel corridor. Typical of roadway planning in the mid to late nineteen nineties, the focus of problem definition, particular congestion, and the solutions focused predictably adding vehicle lanes. Town plan includes policy and design guidance, add more highway right-of-way, motorist convenience and forecast demand for motor vehicle travel. Town plan policy and design guidance also provides space for bicyclists, pedestrians and landscaping that would be crucial for unifying disparate development, furnished property into a coherent civil civic space. The combined features intended for state Route One illustrate the grand compromise to accommodate both motorists and everybody else, which required Caltrans to uppay eighty foot to a hundred and twenty foot right-of-way throughout downtown Wallala. In the general planning document, the vision for state Route One was never subject to detailed operational lifecycle capital delivery, delivery analysis. The community never learned if the vision was practical or feasible. Over, in over two decades since the Wallala Town Plan adopted, several things have and have not happened. Notably, vehicle congestion predicted by the traffic forecast in nineteen ninety never occurred. Much of the development anticipated by the town plan never materialized, not because of inadequate operation of the highway, yet more likely due to insufficient market forces, water and sewer capacity constraints and regulatory impediments. Accordingly, the dedication of sixty-foot half widths of state Route One anticipated by the town plan has not occurred, leaving the highway essentially constrained within the corridor. Yet, the absence of sufficient roadway accident and loss data warrant active or passive traffic management on the highway is ample evidence that adequate roadway capacity support regional and traffic. Science of travel engineering and transportation policy has also evolved with accumulated experience throughout the state. Unlike past emphasis upon highway expansion, due to vehicular congestion, Caltrans policy investment now pursue complete streets that accommodate all modes of travel within state right-of-way, particularly in urban settings where active motorized travel are effective transportation mode. Their transportation planning considers congestion in urban settings as an indicator of destination attractiveness, a measure for potential reduction in vehicle miles traveled using non-motorized vehicles, or boats, excuse me, and a means to intrinsically control vehicle speeds and conflict with pedestrians and bicyclists. Evolving beyond the historic motor vehicle focus of the State Highway Department, Caltrans now invests in all modes of transportation and seeks to integrate civic placemaking and low-impact development appropriate facility context and function. The Act of Transportation Program and Directive Policy Thirty-Seven, A Complete Street, demonstrates Caltrans intent and commitment to processes and outcomes that were not available to the Wallala Town Plan and are little evident in the state of the project. After seeking, after years of seeking funding, MCOG and Caltrans were successful in their second attempt to gain approval of a grant with California Transit from the G T C, the funding from the statewide and highly competitive Act of Transportation Program. Funding for the last round of ATP grants was unprecedented, and the trend feature funding of turning to historic. The Caltrans P A E D milestone includes the project planning phase and enables progress on detailed project design right-of-way, acquisition, regulatory permitting, construction and, and construction. Each of these labor-intensive and time-consuming steps are essentially now funded through the approved ATP grant. Time is now of the essence. At each step, project delay translates directly to increase risk of cost escalation beyond approved budget, changes to project scope, increase the risks of delay and cost that can jeopardize project funding and delivery. Project scope at P A E D defines the project extent, physical area and types and configuration of primary project features, including within south limit, vehicle and bicycle travel lane, pedestrian sidewalks and crosswalks, drainage gutters and conveyances, landscaping, road intersections, driving encroachments, highway right-of-way and private property boundaries. P A E D defers the details of precise location, base allocation, materials and color selections to the next stage of development. Caltrans team has supported several rounds of sketchwork to help the G cap committee visualize particular notion, design detail. However, none of the notional features and layout have been formally evaluated for operational functionality, safety, constructability, lifecycle practicality. Early feedback from Caltrans and Mendocino County government staff indicate concerns about alignment with ATP objectives, consistency with approved ATP grant application, operational effectiveness and safety and maintenance practicality. This is the driver for my comments. North and south limits of the project extent in the approved ATP grant is Ocean Drive to Center Street. Ending northward to include a southbound center turn pocket may have merit, no collision warrants for motorists, but lengthens crosswalk. There's no collision warrant for motorists, not, not sufficient. Is a collision warrant based upon accident data that says that a particular movement or a configuration of the roadway, it needs to be fixed. Uh, there have been accidents here, but the data don't rise to the level that warrants state improvement. On accord, change the configuration of that. It's an automatic process. The function of every state highway is audited on a basis. And typically, these things are daylight through the active transportation program and regional transportation planning process. MCOG just finished the R T P update at the end of this year, at the end of last year. So very fresh, look at what's happening all over the system and on roadways throughout. While there is some data conflict and we can figure, it didn't rise to the point where it's a state investment changing configuration. But that means without a warrant, another kind of internal push, uh, the facilities, the, the act of what's happening out and likely for that. That's the transportation land plan during basis for this discussion. That. Uh, and well, they have merit motors putting in the center pocket there. It lengthens cross, crosswalk exposure to uncontrolled vehicle lane by fifty percent, raises the risk of pedestrian injury due to sightline obstructions and uncontrolled vehicles. Increasing the risk of adverse consequences to pedestrians is not consistent with ATP objectives and should not be added to the ATP fund project. Extending southward to include a decorative median within the center turn lane will interfere with intended function of the left turns in the center street, that turns into, into the Route One pullout. Will complicate and distract motorists interpretation of the center turn, interfere with sightline, complicate and increase the expense of highway maintenance. For the maintenance group, passengers work in the middle of uncontrolled highway lanes and likely be at an viable location for native landscape propagation or maintenance. This median feature is unnecessary, costly and is not an effective proxy. The town plan introduces revision in old state highway. Impairing highway operations, increasing maintenance costs and increasing the risk of adverse consequences to highway users is not consistent with ATP objectives and should not be added to the project. The approved ATP grant defines the project with continuous bicycle lanes, southbound and northbound within the project extent. Project includes two eleven to twelve foot wide vehicle travel northbound and southbound between Ocean Drive and Center Street. The approved ATP grant includes a single twelve-foot left turn lane between the two vehicle lanes between Center Street and the south property line of the Surf Hotel. That's the senior grant. Extending the center vehicle turn lane beyond the approved ATP grant extent will likely increase vehicle speed through downtown Wallala. Motors will have fewer visual or operational prompts to comply with the twenty-five mile radius posted speed limit. An extended center lane will also lengthen exposure to uncontrolled vehicle by fifty percent at two mainline crosswalks and raise risk of pedestrian injury due to sightline obstruction and uncontrolled vehicle speed that goes crosswalk. The extended turn lane pavement will include, will preclude using twelve feet of public right-of-way for peripheral landscaping that would unify the frontages of disparate development north of the Surf Hotel and the creation of an attractive north entry to the village. Placing a decorative median within the extended turn lane at Ocean Drive will interfere with intended function of the such as left turn lanes in the Fordbury left turn and left turns from state Route One uh, into state Route One from Ocean Drive. Complicate and distract motorists interpretation of the center turn lane, interfere with sightlines, complicate and increase expensive highway maintenance. Those maintenance crews hazardous work in the middle of uncontrolled highway lane and likely be an unviable location for native landscape propagation or maintenance. This media feature is unnecessary, costly and is not an effective proxy to the town plan and work gate. Impairing highway operations, increasing maintenance costs and increasing the risk of adverse consequences to highway users is not consistent with ATP objectives and should not be added to the ATP funded project.
So David, um, just looking at the bylaws here again.
Okay.
We're, we're cutting kind of short the other council members' input too. So, you know, we have up to thirty minutes. It says council discussion may continue for thirty minutes and may be extended by the chair or this. I don't want to be in a position where we get cut short.
Okay, I got it.
You don't think so? Okay, well, I'm saying that I'm going to warrant going on, okay, but I, I just want to bring that up very retention. Okay, so that's what we usually do for our bylaws. Um, continue with pedestrian sidewalks and crosswalks, please.
Okay. Uh, and I'm going to acknowledge, Robert, your, your prompt. Appreciate your trying to do things along. And I also appreciate the opportunity to provide technical information in a conversation that has been notably, that notably absent of technical.
Uh, is that something Caltrans will be doing with us though, as we can proceed down the road here?
We're at a decision point, Robert, that requires a technic, an understanding of ethical consequences of this body's advice. I'm going to attempt, now attempting to provide a technically based perspective on the positions that you are recommending for that. Uh, positions that I find frankly to be inappropriate and ill-advised, if not well intentioned. Uh, but I can acknowledge that, I'm going to, I'd like to finish.
I understand you. Go ahead, go ahead.
But I do acknowledge your, your prompt. So I've just talked about vehicle and bicycle lanes and vehicle and the median. The approved ATP grant includes continuous sidewalks, southbound and northbound within the project extent. Uh, or mainline and one side street crosswalk. The latest notional sketch, emphasized notional sketch by Caltrans poses four side street crosswalks and five mainline crosswalks. Adding three side street crosswalks would advance ATP objectives or subject to operations safety analysis. However, adding crosswalks of three-lane highway section will lengthen exposure of uncontrolled vehicle lane by fifty percent and raise risk of pedestrian, pedestrian injury due to sightline obstruction of uncontrolled vehicles through those crosswalks. Increasing the risk of adverse consequences to pedestrians is not consistent with ATP objectives and should not be added to the ATP funded project. The approved grant includes continuous gutters and locates cross-highway drainage conveyances. All important stuff, allocating twelve feet of public right-of-way for center turn lane throughout project extent precludes options for low-impact biophilic development to collect, retain and treat, treat, pre-treat stormwater runoff within the state right-of-way north of the Surf Hotel. This choice may complicate compliance with stormwater runoff quality and quantity requirement, leading to escalation of project delivery and maintenance costs and delayed regulatory approval. This choice will also affect options managed stormwater runoff adjacent private property. The approved ATP grant includes peripheral landscaping complimentary to operational features and safety where space is available within the highway right-of-way. Wherever feasible, existing viable landscaping should be retained or enhanced by new landscaping, if not in conflict with operational safety. Landscapes should have sufficient areas for viable establishment and maintenance. Locations subject to vehicle rollover such as center turn lane median or insufficient ground area less than two, less than four foot width are ineffective and impractical. Landscaping that interferes with on-highway sightline must be avoided. In the three-lane project segment, the only location that potentially suitable for landscaping is one of the Wallala Community Center credit. Landscaping at this location should be designed in collaboration with and subject to acceptance by the community board, center board directors. But the locations within this segment that are outside of the area required nominally for vehicle, bicycle lanes, gutters and drainage and sidewalks should be added to sidewalk. They have to be considered for hardscape amenities by finding sign, lighting, seal, et cetera, so they do not conflict with modal access and safety. In the two-lane project segment defined in the approved ATP grant, landscaping areas should correspond to sidewalk extent and blend that are available or feasible with existing landscaping adjacent to the highway right-of-way. Allocation of highway right-of-way north and south of the property boundary of the Surf Hotel or center turn lane that have continuous and substantial peripheral landscaping not consistent with ATP objectives and should not be added to the project. The approved ATP grant maintains existing public road intersections and private driving, driveway encroachments. Extending a center vehicle turn lane beyond the ATP grant extent may facilitate left turn movements in adjacent private development side street. However, their left turns off and onto the highway will be exposed to higher vehicle speed in the oncoming freeway. Higher vehicle speeds will increase risk of pedestrian and bicyclist. Increasing the risk of adverse consequences to highway users and keeping access to fronting property is not consistent with ATP objectives and should not be added to the ATP funded project. The approved ATP grant anticipates the ultimate right-of-way, state Route One through Wallala to be approximately two wide. Intent of this objective is to minimize taxpayer and property owner costs due to land acquisition and damage compensation. Implementing the downtown, all the downtown streets, streetscape enhancement project within this constraint means the great compromise to town plan and not be realized by the approved ATP grant. All well-intentioned, to impose proxies of the town plan compromise, not consistent with ATP objectives click with applicable operational safety guidelines, exposes state to liability or unnecessary and avoidable hazard and jeopardize implementation of the project on the current schedule and in the funded budget should not be added to the ATP project. If I could share comments, uh, would you mind, you mind? Why?
Why did Robert?
Yes.
At least why?
It's. It's, we should, but.
But we should.
Um, okay, he's been talking since, um, six twenty-nine. So that's, um, six three, that's that's twenty-five minutes. That's a long time. Um, you know, my presentation, Dave, was ten minutes and a lot of this technical stuff and.
Yeah.
Debate.
I agree. Time of the presentation, right? That's something we can take up at a regular game. Um, and I also think it's, it's improper to have us moving on in the presentation. But that's something we can talk about at. Well, I think we need to address this topic. I think we need to address this topic.
Okay, then let's go on to you.
Can I, just two things, I'll say them very quickly. Robert, this slide serves the second of the last slide, it serves the council commission, MCOT and Caltrans, all endorsed by and I see no facts for that alleged. I've had conversations with staff of MCOT and Caltrans that indicate that all five has not been endorsed by those committees and I hazard a guess, if I were to call the council commission staff, ask them if they endorsed all five, I would find some difference. Last bullet, the chief cap members, yes, be approved, all, all five, that may well be the case.
And we, that's what we mentioned to you all at the people's sixth meeting that we were, I mean, a lot of this is technical expertise that happened. Here, I am getting back to it, but I'm also willing to do that back again, but.
Well, okay.
Okay, it's, it differs a lot from some of the comments you gave to, um, MCOT and Caltrans back when you first joined our council, which is very, very surprising.
Do you care to be specific, Robert?
That's not what we're here for. Kevin, why don't you give your?
I'll, I'll defer to Don.
Oh, that's, oh, are you okay with that? This is becoming a little different than I thought here.
Oh, just to figure it down a little.
Wait, let's, let's do that.
Yeah. Well, uh, hard act to follow. Boy, my comments about the, uh, cause of the problem we discussed earlier. I would say that, you know, in my couple of years on GMA, I've never been in a situation where we need a, uh, one individual member to put that line and discuss the topic that was introduced by committee. Normally, the committee member has time to do the topic and often it will help out five minutes. That's what it's normally been, I just wanted to. In terms of, of this particular all five plan, uh, I wouldn't vote for it mainly because I feel I don't want to risk losing the money that has been being funded, you know, by the state for this project. And it does include elements that I feel strongly that, that we desperately need. And that is, I mean, there are bicycle lanes, sidewalks, and some landscaping on the road. Uh, I think, I think those are key elements that would really change areas and make it more welcome to people who don't necessarily want to drive their cars and have other options that are safe. Sidewalks ensure that, uh, include safety quite a bit. Given the fact that when you don't have sidewalks, you're basically walking on the side of the road. Um, it's not perfect, definitely not perfect. I, I'm also concerned about water runoff and how that potentially runs out of the rivers. Water can load up to the, it contains toilets, parkas, tires and stuff, and it's kind of a great for fish in the river. So I'm hoping, uh, Caltrans will implement some way of capturing that water on the side, let it flow into the landscaping areas, which makes a, uh, concept of a way it's done that I've seen in other, within, standing in five.
Robert, do you want to formally extend the discussion time to the?
Does that feel like five minutes for, yeah, oh, in thirty minutes.
Yeah.
I'm going to, yeah, thanks for bringing it up.
Right. The other thing that's, that's not working, I do understand why. On, on street parking, you know, is basically eliminated. However, John raises a good point about, you know, lots of people in the trucks and trailers and stuff. And I am concerned about that, but it may not be an obvious place where these people who look to whatever, neighbors, like down with trailer and a truck. You want to stop and, you know, put the surf or supermarket or law supermarket. That, that, that probably going to be a problem. Hoping that, um, as council, we can look into this and maybe come up with solutions that will function within the framework of the streets. But overall, uh, if that I'm going to vote for, if we need to move forward, it's been, I don't know how long, I guess decades now that this has been a subject matter in this town. I think it's, it's critical that we improve our infrastructure. And along those lines as well, of course, we need things like P E charter for future. So all this, in my mind, makes sense. Move forward and try to get this project going.
There you go. Kevin?
Okay, I, I have some questions. Um, if this resolution is voted down, does that stop the project?
Not necessarily.
Okay, I, I just, I just wanted that to be on the record that this, this resolution is not approved, that does not stop the street skate project or the project.
It was, it was. It is an evolution from the grant application. We have learned a lot of things since that grant application was admitted or was approved for my answer.
But will it stop the project?
Again, we cannot have this project if we allow parking.
No, 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 well, no, I'm saying, yeah, that's what our resolution, I, I just asked, that's, that's the first reason.
Uh, so my understanding is that, from our competition with, uh, then they are trying to continue the process and they think it would be beneficial, the continuation of the process that they have. So if we don't endorse it, that's not going to stop the project, but it is a division of the project.
And if we don't stop the resolution, that they will still have their maybe.
They will have the.
Okay, okay, I, I wanted to make sure to note some questions that we don't want to stop the project if we don't act tonight. And I wanted to make clear the record that if we don't adopt the, that's up.
David?
I'd like to respond to your question about stopping the project. Uh, the risk tonight is that we attempt to advance a project that clicks with the ATP program and puts Caltrans in a position where it has to evaluate possibly advanced features that are operational practice. None of these technical evaluations that have been done for the notion, all five at all, we're shooting in the dark, dissident. Recommending a divergence from adopted project definition that has been accepted and for which funding has been applied. Uh, we're, we're attempting to divert from that to a, a technical window. That puts the project at greater risk and whether or not G Mac endorses something. G Mac is not in the California anymore.
Um, Don, is there a way that you can put? That's not.
That, that got me.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. Let's start with, uh, example one.
Which one do you want to see?
Example one would be the Center Street. And I'd like to, I'd like to thank our chair, Councilor Caltrans, because the diagram that we got at the last meeting and the one that we have tonight has been modified. Your input because there was some concern that, that raised about being able to make left-hand turn on a Center Street.
Right.
Turn on half the station. Um.
And let me interrupt real quick, Kevin, because those are the continued details and technical things that Caltrans would be continuing to work on for us if we encourage them. I'm sure there'll be many more, as Dave has alluded to already. Um, but this is about the basic concept.
Okay, so, okay. Sorry, go away. Um, there was a comment from last meeting regarding exiting one, yes, yeah, probably exit. The one of the driveways out of the Sherwood Station. And I was looking at that again and it looks like there's a walkway in its center median right there. Don, that's example two. I'm concerned because that really means that no one can make a left turn and turn out of the driveway. I agree, you're probably going that way. Because you've got a, a pedestrian walkway there and you can have a center median. So you're forcing all traffic to go right. And I know for a fact, seeing some of the drivers around here, that if they want to make left-hand turn, they would. So that, uh, puts pedestrians and puts the center median jeopardy. Um.
It could still exist, be a third street, um, go left.
If they're pointing in.
Yeah, but if they're pointing in the parking lot at any arc.
I mean, there's plenty, there's plenty of room to come around, uh, for private vehicles with a gap on them.
Okay. Um, my overall concern with Center on Center median strips, you will notice in an ideal situation, we're looking at people being able to make a left-hand turn and enter um, the driveway right-of-way without any uncontrolled traffic that will cause them to stop, wait, fill the safe speed. Some of these medians are placed such that they'll take one car in that center median and then everyone else will have to stop and wait for that car makes a left-hand turn. I guess, I guess my point is, I don't know if those center medians, other than being aesthetically pleasing maybe, uh, are going to be beneficial to our traffic flow. I also know too that someone walking across the street and they're in that center median, cars going in either direction, usually have a tendency to have to slow down uh, because they see a person in the center, it's literally just driving. Um, hang on, Melissa, then. Um, so yeah, I do have, I do have a little concern over Center medians. Um, I'm not a big fan of the left turn lane either because of the very fact that you're going to have congestion. Cars making left-hand turn, it turns in the parking lot and you're going to have it stacked up. As we see the traffic flow right now, there's an awful lot of traffic through Alala. And if you get a delivery truck that have people there, or a, or a trailer, yes, you're, you're going to have congestion and you're going to have to go pick them up around the corner. Um, I'm curious as to the property and businesses that approve all five because I've talked to businesses now and one, they have never seen the plan. And two, they've never been shown the revised plan. And they've got serious concerns. People always meet script or, but the center side, they, they've given me their written opinions on it. Uh, I also had with Robert Owen who, other than, and I shared this with Robert Shaw, in public comment as well, that Owen was still of the impression that the streetscape committee was Robert and Tom. So I had to update him on our current membership, who the members are of the street skate committee. Um, so he has not seen the plan. Uh, I'm not sure. I know Arsenia has not seen the plan and she's been our, now. So there's a lot of businesses that are not seeing updated plans. So I have a hard time proving something or proving a resolution that says, yes, let's move forward with this plan, not talking to the public. And I don't think that no public got this, so that, that's my. Um, so I appreciate, uh, Dave's presentation, uh, all the technical aspects of it. And I appreciate all of the justice, Kevin, being there. This is an important decision. I totally support the idea of a streetscape plan. I think we need to improve our, our roads are terrible. Uh, I, unfortunately, I was scared when it hit all the rain. But I'm sure that the, the drainage is an issue that Don mentioned. Um, the comments from Mr. Owen and also from the community center was in regard to the vegetation, is it going to be at grade or is it going to be slow? And if it's going to be at grade, are we going to be building completely retaining walls? Uh, Robert was kind enough to share with me that I guess the, and for the community center, that it's going to be slow. But we don't know what's going to happen with that big swell front of the motel. Pizza. And I'm sure that as, because some of the others that have, are swelled, we're going to have to address how, how that's going to be. Is it, is it going to be retaining wall at grade vegetation, slow? I, I don't have those answers, so I have a hard night to plan. Doesn't address all residents, businesses, or assets. So I will go back to the chair.
Melissa, you wanted to say something?
Those are all, if even, if we had presented the original, when we first started going through our meeting with Caltrans, this changed so much when we started, in just in three years. This isn't saying, this is, this is what we have to do through. This is saying, this is finally going in better direction than before. And what they will be to do is to do. I've learned other news though. We're just saying, we have to look at the way anyone else, I was going to be a little shorter or a little, planned it on one side and decided to do it the other way. Please. Everyone will be there, lots of them. Not fine. Have both of you off and on, you don't go through, build this, that, that.
All those lines, oh, Henry, come back here anyway.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
All right. I've got tons and tons of information on what we've gone through over the years, you guys. I have been with Alala now thirty-eight, thirty-nine years. I've gone through a sewer project. I have seen so many infrastructure plans over the years. I found these plans, these are engineering drawings of our streetscape as we had it back in two thousand and ten, okay? And there's been probably more renditions of it since then. I've gone through, um, an undergrounding project, utility undergrounded project that took quite a few years to, to get through. This is not what we are. We're not engineers here, you guys, we're not trying to, we are looking at a couple little tweaks like Melissa was referring to. There was a grant application that was submitted to the Act of Trans There was a grant application that was submitted to the active transportation program to add bicycle lanes and to add sidewalks in this town, which we really need. From a tourism perspective, from a business perspective, everybody in town wants this. And yet we're getting into technical stuff which we're not really capable of doing, maybe Dave, because he's got some experience in that in the past. But we are not the ones, we're an advisory council. Get it through your heads. We're not here to design this or, or engineer this. Let the professionals do that. MCAG was the professional when it came to submitting the grant application. We were in this great time period of time where we were fortunate to get a substantial grant. And you need to tell me that we want to pass that up at this point in time? You gotta be crazy. We'll never see you something like this again. I mean, and it's kind of perturbing to me that all of a sudden we have this negativity or this we're talking about extending a center left turn lane from where it is right now in the grant application from the post office entrance. The post office makes me think about something. Two thousand sixteen, I remember the exact date, eight, eight, sixteen. We, we were over, Kevin and I were over when, when the, um, new postmaster got, got sworn in. That's when the post office got relocated from where it was at the Red Stella location back to where it is. That helped relieve a lot of pressure, a lot of stress in this town, a lot of congestion. John admits it, he doesn't have enough parking. When we have busy, high-flow rates of traffic coming to our beautiful area, everybody wants to come up here. We have one way north and south. Everybody wants to get in shot. They love the surf market. I love the surf market. A lot of us love the surf market. But you can only squeeze so many gallons of water into a one gallon bucket. You will see everybody trying to move into the surf market parking lot and you have congestion automatically. Because people are waiting for people to come back out so that they can get in there and park. It's, it's a no-brainer. I don't see why a center left turn lane is so bad, especially if we extend it down that little stretch now from, um, what is it? The, um, the entrance to the post office to the Sunstrom Mall down to the, to the, uh, community center, which will be a focus, a big hub of of activity in the future once they rebuild. It has been in the past already. Now the north end, we're talking about, um, the Sea Cliff. Uh, there's a lot of things that go on there. Um, the, what I was trying to address in my presentation was that we all care about people being safe and coming down the hill has been notoriously a big deal. People have got hurt there. We know local people that have, have really gotten badly hurt there because people are coming down the hill so fast and they want to turn left. We have a lot of our, um, emergency services, meaning ambulance service right here, or, or our CFS, or our churches. A lot of times we have big activities going on, uh, on Church Street up above here, the parallel road of I-1. That is a major intersection for our future. We've got to keep it safe. Um. I respect our predecessors on all this work that we've done over all these years. Many of them who are along, along with us, but who wanted to see this in the worst way for this community. And to disrespect that, and, and we were so close, I'm thinking about past councilmen, past chairman who are still in this area, who I talk to regularly, that we are going to not want to see what we have evolved to here with this wonderful product. And we're gonna have such a, we're gonna get this perfect from an engineering and a design perspective. I feel strongly about that. And we're working closely with MCAG and Altrans on that. So the little variation to the north and the south, the center left turn lane, I disagree with two of our councilmembers on that. Um, when it comes to drainage, we have seen, we used to call it, um, Lake Wallala in downtown Wallala. I mean, it was bad. John can attest to that. Um, we've had drainage issues in this town for, forever. Drainage coming off the hill that's not properly diverted um, to our different culverts that go across the, the the highway to the ocean. Um, I, I feel strongly, we need to find some way to be able to have that runoff off the what becomes a sixty-foot right of way. We're already at fifty-six, fifty-eight in some of our narrow spots at the current crosswalk. We're, we're looking at making it safe for people to cross across. If we can get some of this water to go into vegetated areas that we're proposing here with this additional landscaping that we have. I'm glad we've had people like Dave and I think all the audience have really pushed the landscaping aspect of this project. I'm very happy to see that maybe some of that can be retained in these vegetated areas. Every time I go somewhere out of the area, they can see those curves that people have in their towns meant for runoff to go into these vegetated areas. It's a brilliant idea. It helps soak up some of the oils and things that come off vehicles into the earth and before it hits the ocean where we have all our wildlife. I mean, we really have to see the progress we've made and how close we are to reaching the finish line with this product that we have right now. It will be incumbent upon all of us, commercial property owners as well as to find other solutions, to find ways to park on the properties that we have already, onsite parking. See it all the time, how the emergency vehicles or P G D, whoever it is, they will park behind the Wallala Country Inn. They will park behind the Wallala Hotel. They will park at the hotel, at, at the Sea Cliff. At various places. They go off, off-road, off the street, off the highway. Who's to say we need them on the highway? It's a convenience for us all that we just happen to be, it's our behavioral patterns that we've grown and liked and accustomed to in this town. We can change. We can do better. So, I'm sorry, I, I don't, I'm not a talker. I was a little shy, reserved kid when I grew up. I got into community service when I got to Wallala, and now I'm doing all this stuff. I just can't believe it. I want to see what's best for Wallala, and that's, that's my stance, okay? Sorry I raised my voice a little bit, but that's just, it gets me going. I'm sorry. Back to, back to you, Henry.
Uh, so, uh. Actually, first, just a quick question for Kevin, because I put some of these things in. Kind of like you're saying about the left turn lane.
With what?
Were you saying that the left turn lane increased in essence?
No, what I, what I said was that it'd have the same result as two lanes that have uh, multiple, let's say multiple cars flowing into the post office. Or multiple cars flowing into, uh, the Sunstrom Mall. What we're, what we're gonna do is with the medians, not allowing someone to line up in the center turn lane because of, because of the, the landscaping. So what's gonna happen is you're gonna have someone turning, they're gonna be in the center lane, but they're not gonna be able to make a left turn, want to come in traffic. There's no way for another car to go into that center lane. And that, and that was my point is that you're not providing for multiple vehicles in the center lane restricted because of the landscape.
I, I, I agree. Although I don't, I don't think I see any any spots where you could have.
It's safe for that way.
I mean?
It's safe for that way.
Okay.
I don't think I see it.
Otherwise, uh, without the, without the island, what you have is what everybody would call a suicide. If it's a constant, you can go either way, you get suicide. Despite you conclude in having it be a suicide.
Okay, I've got some.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Oh, so I'm sorry. Are you done? Are you done?
No.
I'll come back to you afterwards if you, if you're not done.
No, I'm not, I'm not done.
You're not done, dude?
Oh, sorry, yeah, sorry, that was it.
Oh, okay.
So. I appreciate, uh, what he's put together here, um, and, uh, that he's bringing along, that he's got a helpful approach. Um, some of it was, was over my head, um, uh, some of it I sympathetic to. Uh, but ultimately, um, I don't, I think that it's way outside of all of, you know, fifteen minutes. Like, I, I don't, I think that, that these details are just you, you may have the, um, background to, uh, actually have an influence, contribution on most subjects. I should know a bit of the other. Um. Altrans though. I'm probably, maybe also, yeah, I haven't got a lot of those in terms of, uh, I also think that you were bringing a lot of things, uh, well, this conflict with the A T P plan. Um, and that, that may end up true on the board. Um, I think that indication we got from our conversation with Altrans were that they thought that most were all of the U K Ls by the A T P or they went to tell us they wanted to pursue. And we did specifically have the, try to get a read on that. Uh, and they told us they wanted to do the, the, their read on it. They thought these things are kind of the same. So. To these sensitive conflicts with the A T P goals, they'll make that comment and they'll tell us no one can. Um, and if, if they do that, then they do that. Um, I, I don't think it's our role to try to represent the A T P D and say, well, this is gonna conflict with their goal. Um, especially when, I think we all believe that project as a whole, not that the project itself is going to make improvements on, on all of it. Um. I also think there's no, when you talk about the little details, as Melissa said, there's, there's no, there's no version of this where every little detail gets ironed out perfectly and then it comes back to a full community process. And more tweaks get made. That's just not, there isn't space in the timeline for any of that. I mean, that's the project work. It's more of a broader direction. And I think our role as B M A is to say, well, and all of these discussions will be way before my time. But as I understand it, the broad approach to this plan went through any number of different areas. Um, there were, uh, there were many discussions with business owners, with property owners, members of the public at large, uh, any number of back and forths with Altrans, MCAG. It's a long, long, long process that resulted ultimately in five, or various versions that were all pretty similar to one another with maybe some descriptions given out in the parking, which is out there. Because of those, that's the thing. So. Ultimately, the question that I think we're here to say, does this plan as further detailed by Altrans meet what the community has already reviewed and said? And I think if the answer is yes, even if individual council members have disagreements with what that direction is in. Uh, I don't believe that that exactly is our, our role, our rule of the year in process already. If this meets that community processes goal, and one of the things through that process, then we should be kind of, yes, we want to. And a bunch of details have changed and shifted, and maybe some of them we're gonna love, maybe some of them. We'll, we'll see how it goes. That's, it's the nature. But, um, that, to me is what I see as our role is to say, does this meet what we've already said as a community? And if the answer is yes, that could be a good reason to. My, my read on it, again, I was not present for all of it, but I, I read a lot of the stuff. Not with that, I think people about that process. My read on it is this excellent version of what the community said. Producers congestion, and by investing lanes, making things and improves landscaping, things and improves drainages. There are any number of things that are in the Altrans, that are involved, that are supposed to be goals of it. My view on this is that this pursues those goals. And therefore I'm.
I'd like to make a motion that we pass that we vote, pass the rest of this.
Okay.
Dave, I'd like to.
Sure, I have a question.
I'll second that in the discussion.
Okay. Um.
Can we break it to a vote? Is it, is it, I'm out. Make a motion, the motion says, uh, vote.
Uh. If I'm not mistaken, it's open discussion, correct?
Yeah, discussion can be, can be monitored as a second.
We can deliberate still, yes. But we have a motion and we have a second? We do though, right?
Yeah, we have a motion, we have a second.
Okay, what do you, what do you?
Well, my, my question, um, can you put up? I, one, um, I just want to answer Melissa's questions. Uh, Melissa, you'll see the close proximity of the, uh, the median areas does not allow more than one car to make a left turn.
You've never been in that situation?
I have a two-way road.
Have you been that?
But that's not, that's.
Have you been in that situation? In this situation? Where you're.
Yes, I have it. Do you? Okay. Um.
Yeah, sorry, that, once, once there's.
I have been. It just happened.
Right, okay.
You just sit there and stop? The person reminds you to stop.
Exactly.
Sorry, sorry.
I could say.
Well, one, there can be a discussion about whether
Right.
whether we're voting. I, I think that if we want to have a, a larger continuing council discussion, then you could first vote on the.
Uh, so you're basically saying that right now, that I need some, some information before I can to vote, you're saying that I can't?
Uh, and so, so when you file, say, if the motion and then council discussion stops immediately, that's a soft second.
While I'm reading, yeah.
If there's no second motion, the dying, the pressing of the resume, otherwise when the motion is made, seconded, votes deducted, you necessarily have to report the tally.
You're saying that's, that's.
It's, it's the dialogue. He's just reading for the dialogues.
Yeah, I think it's, we need to, there's a motion, a second to vote on it. And then you can continue discussions, maybe there's another vote, there's a sound.
Mr. Pierre, your decision, are you, I'm going, I'm going by our dialogue.
I do believe the motion was to approve the resolution, and the second was to discuss the approval.
Motion for discussion. He seconded her discussion.
Is what you said to me, but I'm reading the dialogue.
Just that, who, just seconded, who discussed the passage of the resolution, does the resolution itself. That's why I was, that Mr. has to say. Second of order, the second of order based on the body.
We've done it both ways, that's the thing, but, um.
But that's. We're only gonna follow.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, and Kevin wants to speak still, so please put your lighters.
I, I just have some clarification on you had made a mention, you, you had mentioned, I'm, I'm just trying to look at the discussion. Okay, it's watering.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, do we know where our watch sources look? Does that be part of our review?
It, it will be, yes. Um, we have, have to reach out to those organizations that I was mentioning. We have a post light and certainty. I think there um, there's other, they have plant society, there may be others out there, there may be individual property owners. I know that right now on the Wallala block trail, um, there are people that get water from, I think it is even of John's, headed at the serve. Um, that those will be resolved. Again, I look at those as being smaller details. I think with this plan and having a limited amount of landscaping, rather than even more landscaping, we the water shouldn't be an issue. But anyway, I, I.
We should be.
We've got a motion.
We've got a motion, we should vote.
John, were you, were you seconding Melissa's motion?
I don't know.
Okay, then, you can vote.
Okay, Melissa. David.
No.
Henry?
No, I'd like to continue this.
What's that?
No, I'd like to continue this.
Okay. Kevin?
No.
Uh? And then I.
That, that's pretty great, so that failed.
Okay.
Now I'd like to continue the discussion.
Further discuss.
To make a motion, we also.
Yeah, but Kevin, do you want to finish up and then follow you?
Um. I'm, I'm still comfortable with the open-ended questions. Uh, and sending a message to Altrans that, yes, we like the plan that they've submitted to us. Is there some areas that we have interest? Uh, primarily with landscaping, effect of watering, effect of maintenance. You could say it looks great now, but a year to years now, they'll be maintaining, they'll.
You see?
Uh, but yeah, so my, my concern is that, you know, Robert makes a, a great presentation that we've got all these people that are gonna be willing to water it and maintain all these mediums on the down strip. We see right now with the landscaping on the side, how we want it to look like right now. Where people think that there could be volunteers who are gonna stand up in the middle of the road, uh, watering, feeding, trimming the landscaping. I've got a problem with that, I think my, my sticking point right now, uh, with this whole plan is just the landscaping, uh, the center median landscaping and not talking to business. So, I like the plan, I'd like to move forward, but those are my reasons why I will not support it.
Kevin. Negative, zero escape. It is not landscape, not the negative zero escape plan. Plan, you can have a zero escape plan, so a zero escape is. If it were negative zero escape, but you have to worry about it. It doesn't mean watering, a lot of this stuff is watered, because there's all that stuff on the street, doesn't need watering. Roads and the, it's, it's native, it's, menagerie of the stuff, like, we get all right in the middle and then leave the dry stuff. We kill the watered. All these are tweaks that happen later on. If I didn't say, oh, the, the trolley gas is out there, we're gonna put steady grass out. This is the backstage of the.
That, that.
So.
I think that.
Their minds, but this is not the time to let.
Okay. Go ahead.
I think ultimately, this was an open question and I'm here with Caltrans and that you were going to go in and, and to me, but not knowing, nothing. Someone's gonna ask me anything and there's a, the communities that have to do it. I can understand your perspective, but you're doing well. Um, I see beautiful maintenance getting done on the prime, bluff trail. And it's different, not on the little road. But it's different, that, that may be a little different, but I do see the task leading town, where volunteers getting into the landscaping. I understand your concern that that may not be fair and ultimately what they said, that that these, you pointed these in, they will ultimately, as they said in 2025, need to actually have someone formally get, for some organization formally get the possibility for maintaining them. So if they can't get that, then they're moving. But if they can get that, then there will be, and there will be that. So. Ultimately, that problem may get resolved in one direction or another, but we don't have to.
It's always the best brush and native. How to really pump it, it was pretty important. And I would be.
And it, you're done? And it would be a shame to, to see us not be able to resolve this with, with, um, native plants or with low drought tolerant end of landscaping and that be just a hardscape, then that's not what we want. But, um, I, I think we've got plenty of time to resolve. David.
I have tremendous respect for the town plan, the thought that you care that. Robert, I have a lot of respect for your time here and what is important is to put in blood, sweat and tears. Everything I've said and the energy that I've brought here is not in any way a hominid conflict with your dedication, perspective. I have no debate about Senator in the ATP grant application, Senator Turner Lane between Center Street. No debate, I didn't debate that at all. And I acknowledge your concerns and others who said that that's a really tough place to navigate. And if we as a community decided, apparently based on your and Tom's, uh, position, if the community decided that Senator Lane is the best way to use a sixty-foot land, uh, public right of way, then so be it, but then if we are going to allocate that precious space, not instead provide landscaping, truly distinguish that entry, you know, let's make sure that it functions as well and it's safely. That, don't put objects in it that complicate the interpretation of waters that may or may not be prepared, may or not have great eyesight, or may or may not be fully cognizant, or want to be in the backseat. Don't complicate the operational vernacular, Senator Turner Lane is already complicated, but it has unregulated conflicting movement. Don't put objects in it that would take up capacity, that would have to get rolled over and then maintained and rolled over again. Make it work as best as it possibly can if we're gonna do it, optimize its functionality and its safety. Don't put people out in unregulated operating highway, maintain something that will never, ever survive, I've talked with half dozen people at CNPS, colleagues at Regico, Land Conservancy, everybody who's heard the notion that planted median in the highway just shakes their head and says, you gotta be kidding. So my argument is not with the Senator Turner Lane, nor with your experience, that is the result. I'm just saying simply, don't put doodad in the middle of a functioning roadway that's intended to do a job and we want it to do that job without killing people or exposing them to hazards. Okay, none of those Senator Turner, and Caltrans doesn't do that anywhere. They don't do it anywhere for a good reason, okay? That's different than say, the design process that has been alluded to, that we talk about some decorative stamping or hurdles that extinguish that sidewalk, you know, the gore at the end of town, visibly gonna cause, bring, bring some attention to the pavement treatment. Don't put those items anywhere in the center. That's kind of thing number one. Thing number two, the ATP grant and the project that's defined in it represented the community input. It, it embodied the project that this community wanted with the sole exception of a diverted, it included parking. The public's permission, county has said, no, but get it guy. With a change north of the Valada Motel, get rid of the parking, but it's still a two-length facility. I don't see the functional need, and I either did the ATP grant application, continue that center turning all the way up Ocean Drive. That gives up twelve feet that we could separate, separate onto both sides of the, of the highway and the six-foot landscape drift contiguous with pavement, think of the, think of the space that would create, the connections that would create all the way up that worst side of town, we wouldn't need doodad to, the highway, people rolling down the hills, it's really nice. Freezing the town, so what I'm suggesting solely, sorry about going off the line, but technical evaluation goes through reinforcing that ATP project, but clearing up some things that got wrong, rid of the parking, because it's longer acceptable. And if you, if the committee in the community and this council truly feel that you gotta have that pocket, that turn pocket southbound into Ocean Drive, okay, it's gonna die on the shore, maybe that's the sword to die on, but not a continuous center turn lane. Just those are the wrong things to pursue and those things may technically be the Achilles heel that unhinges the project's feasibility for asking Caltrans to continue to invest design effort in things that it doesn't feel good about. Talking to the Caltrans, their, their design staff, did this so that the committee could visualize its ideas, they could see how they lay out the space, one thing they kind of imagine when you like to have a, you know, a decorative median, nothing, see how it plays out and how it begins to conflict and function. That's what they were trying to do, they didn't have time or resources to subject them. Let's not get tripped or tripped by nice and well-intended ideas, stay the course, keep this thing functional, keep it simple to operate, simple to maintain, don't beat people in the farm today. That's the entire breadth of my desire, my hope for today. I can offer alternative resolution language that I support, that again, keep us on this track moving forward. Uh, and that leave appropriate specific material and divine detail in the next stage.
Henry.
Um, so. What I'm, uh, I have, I have heard two different businesses put in position, one of which is that the median make this road safe for everybody, and one can test if they can, if they can get more safe for that, they can. Um, I'm a dude that, that almost certainly have stubborn, I should have been to the pound. Um, but I don't know that, um. I, again, I don't think it is this, I roll the community that. Um. If Caltrans thinks that the median is done, they, last day, you just put your attitude, if you will propose. Then, no, opposed to that, and we're here about that process, I haven't heard that from them. Uh, so I, I'm, I'm, uh, I still have a valid position, way beyond. Uh, I don't really think that that's a debate we have in GMAX because we don't have the bodies that go out there. So, I mean, I guess this is, I think, a very good question for Caltrans, when we, when they met, what is their perspective on whether we need to, if that's, if that's the, if that's the. But. Without, you know, actual experts, um, there, then I don't know what to do with, with the assertion that these doodads, as we call them, reduce the function promptly.
I think it's fair, that, that otherwise.
Problems, but it be appropriate. These streetscape committee, if the question appears tonight, you take it back to them, get some answers, and if you get answers, then give those some variance, you can disseminate the concept.
I think this is all good input and we will, in fact, um, we will give them what we've received tonight from, from you all, okay? But I still would like to see us come up with some kind of a, a motion or a resolution telling them, yes, you're heading in the right direction. And we've encouraged them already this far with council input all along, and, um, I, I see the reason why we shouldn't um, continue with these, these drawings at this point.
This is my first, uh, streetcape, so that, that's why.
And I, I see that, and both you and David have been around at least a lot of time on this, but I'm, I'm thinking about the whole publance thing, okay, and I'm going, we are very close here and, and we can still get these details and engineering feats worked out. Um, Melissa.
Some of the details that have been brought up are the, well, quite into this, to say, look, I don't like this, because they've got sixteen walls on their house. They should be at least eight that includes a hall around here, then more so. That is the level of expertise the people who came up with that plan have. We're to advise them, this is a good direction, we're not here to say, I don't know, that isn't what I say. What are you idiots doing? Obviously, you don't know your job, because you put that in. This was done by, this was done by people who do street and roads and medians and crosswalks. All the way along, how they go ahead red line, how they burn it.
Okay, I, I'd kind of like to move along here and I'd like to maybe, I'm not sure if this is right, the bylaws are not, I'd like to go out to the audience members one more time, council one more time, and then let's wrap it up, okay?
Yeah, if, if anyone wants to re-open public comment, then the bylaws, uh, use the.
It's, it's, I thought I saw that, yeah, and I.
Yeah.
So, John, would you like to say one more?
I've been sitting back here, like, I should have liked the space out of it.
Okay.
Council members may also make a push to re-open public comments.
Okay, then I'll make the question.
You're making the question, okay, second?
Second.
Okay, John.
Oh. Wait, you can call him.
I'm sorry, we're already in the vote, we made, I, um, Melissa.
Dave.
Henry?
Hi.
Dave?
Okay.
Dave, uh, Evan? John?
Hi.
All right, okay. Um, John?
Oh, we've had many discussions with Caltrans and different.
But I'm going to say, let's leave it three minutes if we can, okay?
Okay, so what I see here is something that I didn't think we were gonna have. And, and I'm not speaking about parking on the street, I'm, I'm speaking about the center left turn lane. They all of a sudden decided that, you have, you have three possibilities for left turn you. You have a lane marked, make it simple, um, and that's my goal, I think Dave might say the same thing. If you have an accident, you can use the center turn lane for traffic. If you have, um, a utility working on the sewer lines in the northbound lane, they need traffic to get around them, use the center turn lane, put some delineators out there. You haven't got enough room for people to turn left up Center Street or out of Center Street, that's pretty obvious. Mark it and leave the vegetation out of it and don't put any raised curbs. You know, one of the things that's gonna happen here is, is what do you got, four new crosswalks that are gonna have flashing lights? And I, I don't think this is Valada, I don't feel good about it. I realized when all of a sudden you opened it up, now you've got people checking twice as long to get across the street. What do you think it's gonna be like on a busy day? It's not gonna speed up the traffic, it's gonna slow it down. Because these people are gonna be going back and forth and back and forth. Um, let's make it simple, I think Dave said, simple. And let's get away from the vegetation out in the middle where somebody has to maintain it, somebody gonna drive over it, ruin it. Uh, you have all kinds of maintenance stuff, let the individual property owners on the shoulder do some vegetated things that are nice for the community in combination with your sidewalks and leave the center just for.
Okay, John, thank you, um, anybody else, audience, um, waving? Um, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, first I'd like to address a couple of things Dave said, he's wrong, um, the plan that was submitted to the uh, ATP grant was never shown to this community. Uh, it, we only, the Streetscape Committee only saw it after the grant was approved. Uh, it was not a part of four A, um, and it really misled the public. Um, so it's, Caltrans at that point came to the Streetscape Committee and asked for comment. It is GMAX, um, job to provide comment to public agencies. I've got to say, the Streetscape Committee has done an outstanding job of working with Caltrans, after several diff- difficult years of working with Caltrans, I know this. Uh, there's great cooperation from the project director Karen Kunrad. Uh, this has been reviewed by the landscape architect, uh, it's been reviewed by their engineers. On, anything you see on this drawing, uh, may be a little bit refined further, but this has all been approved by Caltrans. I'm sorry, Dave has never seen a landscape, landscape median on a state road, I don't know where he drives, but I see them all the time. Um, that's just not true. Uh, as far as the engineering goes, that's Caltrans's job, our job, uh, your job on GMAX is basically to say, does this meet the requirements of the town plan? Yes, it does, uh, everything in here is required in the town plan, and I've actually gone a little bit additional with, uh, some extra landscaping on, on land that Caltrans already owns. Um, so I think, you know, you're dancing in circles, I think you should reconsider Melissa's motion now uh, and end discussion, because I think this could go on for hours and hours and I don't think anybody is really gonna gain anything out of this. anything out of this at this point. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tom. I'm gonna say a couple more things here, because I'm looking at the, the grant application here again, at the center left turn lane between the Surf Motel and the southern entrance to the Sunstrom Mall there, and to the post office. From everything I've discussed or learned and researched over the years, I mean, we've got two thirteen foot lanes north of the Surf Motel to Ocean Drive. The narrower roadway is, the safer it is, the less speeds are, okay? So we have that to contend with. We don't have an actual median in the median island in the, in the grant approved application, but we do have a center left turn lane, and we, and we have it right in the most congested part of town. I think any kind of a median we have in our point four tenths of a stretch here in this town is gonna help in slowing down traffic coming from the south and from the north. And they're just gonna, it was an ordeal to get us down to a twenty-five mile per hour speeding that I recall back with. And so if we can ever get around about as another project down the road with Caltrans, that would be great. We've talked about it in the past in many of our town meetings and G Mac meetings. But right now, what we're trying to do is get that left turn lane in at Ocean Drive, which we all feel is essential. And from south of that left turn pocket, I should call it, at Ocean Drive, going up this Ocean Drive area where all the commercial properties, where, where the emergency services are, you have to do something on the other end. I'm not an engineer, I'm just speaking like, you have to do something on the other end. You might as well have a center left turn lane, a bit on the south side of Ocean Drive, connecting with the existing center left turn lane that we have. And if we could add another median in that stretch, which I don't know where else, and if there is one, I don't believe there is one, but we have that important median at the south side of the Ocean Drive intersection. It's been curved already from a design perspective to allow emergency vehicles to make that nice left hand turn. That was brought up fifteen years ago. Emergency people brought that up. So I think we're, we're doing good with getting the design refined to what we need, and let the professionals continue with that. Okay, I'm gonna slowly stop here myself and let a couple more people speak, and then let's see what we do there. Dave.
Okay. Robert, you, you mentioned concern about healing the green.
Yeah.
And it's a big deal.
Yeah.
There's only so much state highway out there, and then properties like yours and, and that bar limited partnership, but really tightly against the highway, there really isn't a lot of room. John, I think you mentioned about the treatment, run off, really nasty stuff, but it takes space. Two foot wide landscape strip doesn't cut it, never worked, it's totally impractical.
I was referring more to back of sidewalk.
Back of sidewalk is good, but what, what, okay, you have to put it on somebody's property. So north of the motel, Surf Motel up to Ocean is, my view, the opportunity. I like your point about narrowing it a point, thirteen foot lanes is kind of floppy, but take the, take the through lanes down to twelve feet and allocate that instead of having a center with the Surf Motel. They're doing that. Allocate, and we saw a drawing, Escape Architect showed really nice broad escape strip continuous with, vigorous with the, with the back sidewalk in those areas. That's the place where we could do biotreatment as well, where we could implement effectively.
Yeah, we could, but I've thought about that too, David, and I'll interrupt here, but that brings up even more landscaping maintenance issues. That brings in more watering issues, so.
Not necessarily.
It, it does.
Well, I kind of built these things before, and if I understand how, and depending upon vegetation types that are used such as native landscaping, they're really adapted to the hydrology.
Sort of think, well, take care of completely.
Well, it's two things going on. You get treatment with biota, but that also gives space, there isn't enough room for adequate treatment. Had to go subterranean or other types of mechanical treatment. You can still get that done inside of a state right of way, but unless we make room, we got that capital, unless we allow state right to use that way, once you put that center turn lane, you don't have enough space. So it's a choice, isn't it?
No.
Loud and clear, that gotta have that center turn lane downtown. Got it? I got it loud and clear. Is there the same urgent need for center turn north of there other than the southbound pocket in Ocean Drive?
Yes.
Or is that our opportunity, that's presently in the ATP grant, to advance a set of solutions that take care of fleet streets, so proper landscaping, nice sociable space for pets to walk around, and also give us some space to deal with a serious environmental problem within the state highway and to get the project to implement it. Otherwise, we just keep on kicking it and down the road. So I'm prepared to offer some adjustments to the resolution that I can support. I'll defer to the committee whether or not it wants to, again, make this kind of two lane, three lane shift in its thinking, but I prefer to offer a compact set of words to the exist, the current resolution that I think is supportable, that I can support, and that subjects the notion of center turn island.
No.
Frankly, I didn't advise and not approved by Caltrans, um, and I've talked with Karen Kurnat about that, not approved, not advised, and not implemented anywhere on the highway system where there's a center turn lane. That's not a center median, that's a center turn lane. So the implementation of those islands, I would like to just add a parenthetical comment within the, within the current language of paragraph one, two, three of the whereas it's that would read this way. You want to do that? No, no, I, I just wanna lay it out there and see if somebody wants to take that on, you know, move it and move with it. But that's just an idea, I just want to get, and I think it probably should be. So the third one, it would, it would read this way. Whereas Caltrans PDP has reincorporated the design features from the June and twenty nineteen, then proposed negative declaration document, namely a left turn pocket for South Democrat traffic in Ocean Drive. Additional landscaping, vegetated median island, rapid continuous left turn lane of the project. Subject to Caltrans operational safety analysis parent, which may not support Karen's features forward, both Karen and additional landscaping at the southern gateway and northern end of Streetscape Project. That's my, both addition, then again, it's clear that we have a notion ostensibly something that people are interested in because it's decorative, because it adds aesthetic value. But we're also aware that motion hasn't been tested operation, and that we do not want Caltrans to invest significant taxpayer funds, committed budget, in pursuing a design, set of design feature that had now become functional aspects of the project. We make this recommendation they go into the ATP project definition. This isn't a trivial matter, and we don't want Caltrans, we want Caltrans to do some thinking first before they carry it any further.
Can I ask you a reason?
Absolutely. You want just a parenthetical?
After, towards the end of the third.
It's, it's, yeah, it's lots in right after continuous left turn lane of the project. Subject to Caltrans operational and safety analysis, Karen, which may not support Karen's features forward, both Karen.
Okay, I don't mind that addition, but were you right where you say, okay, up to analysis, subject to Caltrans operational and safety analysis?
Can I propose an alternate to that?
Of course, that's, that's why I wanted to, we, we all get the.
Insofar as those analysis support.
Reason I wouldn't support that, I mean, I like the idea, because you and I are.
Yeah. Yes, there are different ways.
In different ways, but I want to make sure it answers the curve regardless, that one way or the other, one of the first things they do is look at the, analyze the operational and safety consequences, and not make it a condition. We want them, we want them to consider those islands, but first check and find out if they are operationally, if they function properly as intended in a center turn, and that they're, that they meet safety. Otherwise, they, like, proceed with everything else, several of them.
When it comes down to it, above all, we want oppositional and safety concerns addressed. So I, if you leave it at that, I would approve of the amendment.
Here's the deal, Robert, we're asking them to, anyway, the merits of these, okay?
Yes.
But we're not giving them a free hand to excise those things that don't meet their purpose. The parenthetical comment gives them the discretion to remove. Without that parenthetical comment, they're still stuck with our recommendation, something in the project that there's dilemma. I just want them to do the study, and if the study indicates these, right, take the step out.
I don't suspect any of us would want it in there if it were a safety or an operational concern. I, I don't want to speak in front of you, but I, I think that would be how we wish it to be.
Well, I guess the point is this. G Mac is in an important position representing the community, but Caltrans has deferred treatedly and lately to G Mac as that voice. I don't want this resolution to create, to put Caltrans in a position where their technical discretion is somehow undermined by their deference to others. So here's the point. We're gonna ask them to make these changes, and ask them to test these changes, specifically center decorative median to their standard operational functionality and safety. But I think we should also defer to Caltrans, tell them so briefly, that they have discretion to remove those things that don't, they don't have to come back to us, they don't have to check in with us. It's nice that they give us a heads up, but at this point, what I'm suggesting is we let Caltrans carry forward the design, and if necessary, decision on why it's carried. If we don't give them the parent, we are leaving open their authority.
Okay, so the. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, this, this is actually what I was hoping for, that if any of us have a problem with the resolution, that some language would be added that would bring us to a sense. I think you've done that, and I, I really don't have any problem with what you've done. Because I think it's decent half the thrust of the resolution, but it provides Caltrans with capability to eliminate these elements if they do, they're really not.
Operation.
Problem. I'll find, and Robert, this is me channeling, you're thirty years of nothing, getting on through that, so let's not, let's really honor that fully by not putting objects in the middle of that, that building.
Okay, so I haven't heard the, the, how are we gonna amend this then?
You both need to amend this, then you both the resolution.
In the amendment, af- after continuous left turn lane of the project, and Karen, or whatever you call it?
An open bracket.
Open parentheses is, is subject to Caltrans operational functionality and safety analysis.
Analysis.
Okay.
Parent, parent which may not support Karen's.
How about if there won't be care?
We want them to do the analysis, whether or not they support it, whether, whether not, whether or not Caltrans supports the decorative.
Yeah.
After they've done these analyses, determine that these features conflict with operational and safety standards, then enable their authorized.
Yeah, but so.
Well, I'm saying here.
My, so my, I mean, my issue with the tone of the parenthetical is it seems to be nudging them in the direction of.
We need approval.
Either way. That's why, that's, that's why I'm trying to.
Okay, here's a very wrong theory. Here we go. Subject to Caltrans operational safety analysis and determination and, and subsequent determination, carry these features forward.
I'd like it to say myself, subject to Caltrans operational functionality, I like that word you used earlier, and safety analysis and standards.
Do you think they're allowed to use this, like this without doing it?
I agree, but if we want it in there, we want to come up with some kind of a consensus here, and we're willing to do that, it sounds like all of us, because we do care about overall safety and operation of the highway. Our main street is where it's gonna be, so. I, yeah.
I don't think we're suggesting, Melissa, we're not suggesting anything to Caltrans that I think will, will conflict with their inclinations. What I'm saying is that this resolution has written could place Caltrans and G Mac at odds, and that's, that's unnecessary. What this resolution, I think what we're trying to do here is, is suggest that Caltrans consider some decorative features in the middle of the center turn lane. But we want Caltrans to, number one, analyze, you know, figure out if there are any efforts, consequences to these features, and if so, feel free to remove them. We're not gonna harass them about that, but we want them to, number one, check it out and to actively.
Yeah, I think, I think this is a.
It is, it is, and subject, subject to are very strong words, okay?
They haven't yet.
No, it's, it's reinforcing, it is how I look at it.
They haven't done it yet.
And then. Okay, in the language, let's say it again. I mean, I'd leave it, I'd end it at standards, okay? If you want to add that word, standards.
Well, I think, I think Dave is.
The motion, okay, he is the amendment maker.
Yeah, I like, Matt, so I think we all agree up until the parenthetically, and then I think conceptually we, we seem to agree on that, emphasizing that they can take it out.
Here's, here's, just see if this works for you guys. Subject to Caltrans operational and function, operational and functional, operational, functional and safety analysis, determine whether these, whether to carry these.
I think you need that to, to determine. It's subject to meeting Caltrans operational functionality and safety analysis and standards.
Okay, you want to do the meeting thing, that's fine. Subject to meeting.
Meeting Caltrans. Operational functionality, that, right functionality. And safety analysis.
Safety standards.
Safety standards is better than analysis, okay?
Well, you, what, okay, you're changing the, what you're changing, what I was proposing was that they do the analysis, what you're saying is, let's just get to the bottom line based on standards. You're, you're presenting it performance measure. So, and I get it, here's how I read, subject to meeting for satisfaction. Subject to satisfying Caltrans operational, functional, safety standards.
Functionality drop, right?
No, I couldn't.
Okay.
Satisfying operational, functional, safety.
Okay, subject to.
And that's the full parent.
Okay, subject to meeting this.
Subject to satisfying.
To satisfying, writing it?
Subject to satisfying Caltrans operational, functional, safety.
Okay.
No, I'm, I'm not even opposed to responding in terms of providing captain with the ability to, our standpoint, to eliminate these many threats. Yeah, they've done. Yeah, they would turn. That would not be having these safety.
Or is it?
Implying it, yeah, we're okay with that. Which, yeah, which would you? Kinda had that, I thought.
Yeah, but then we could go the other way too.
That was probably. They're gonna take them out if they determine that.
That's.
We are making it explicit, so we're also popping out again. We're also avoiding, Caltrans have to ask us the reverse direction. Which is an awkward thing, particularly back to time.
Does anybody object to the, to that, that new? And people want, my, that's what we think, and then they just want to change in that wording that was on the board.
Let's hear it one more time.
You want me to read, I'll read the full parent.
No, oh, okay.
Sure. Here's the, see it in context, whereas the Caltrans P D T has reincorporated desire to design future. Those negative declaration document, namely a left turn pocket southbound traffic, drive additional landscaping via vegetated median islands throughout the continuous left turn lane of the project. Parent, subject to satisfying Caltrans operational, functional and safety. And additional landscaping of southern gateway, other end. That's the present.
So these amended?
That's the present amendment related to the last filing. I'll ask one last time, is this group, is that stomach to revisit center turn lane? North of Surf Market. I'll drop it.
Of the Surf Market, you say?
Sorry, sorry, Surf Market, thank you for the correction. And we revisit allocating sixty feet of this precious right of way pavement, set of pavement allocated. I won't bring it up again. Well, I. No, it, yeah, debated, debated, I don't get. But I'm not opposed to. Especially if it can improve our ability to filter waste of runoff water. That is destined for the. Otherwise, so if, if we can do that, I think that is. The environment aspect of this.
So. As I understand, we're hopefully gonna get that. Uh, that motion.
Yes.
So then, something has to happen on the other side of that.
You can terminate electric pocket at a.
Okay, so.
Complimentary period.
Okay, cause this has been, this has been a question that I've presented over later. Yet to really get clarity from Caltrans as to their position, what that.
Have to do.
So, uh, so what we're really trying to do is there's a thing from surf in, basically, we're, we're talking about everything on this. Right, is, uh, in the original A T P grant application, the center turn lane terminated. And we're talking about everything, but it doesn't have the left. So now, we're hopefully gonna get the left turn pocket of the solution. And the question is what happens in that in light of that? Being hopefully.
Having two lanes south of Ocean Drive and turn pocket southbound, fourth of Ocean Drive is not in.
Okay, so, um, we have, we're gonna have maybe in May.
We have, um, the greater community meeting to introduce this, all five of the greater community in May, middle of May. Um, eighteen, I wanna say.
That's presumably not the place for them to be bringing.
Any other change, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Now, if we did something along those lines that Don just brought up, um, and in you, Henry. Where we also said, subject to, um. That not being necessary to have a central left turn lane south of the Ocean Drive intersection, that could be potentially other amendment.
Yeah, so, um. This is, so I, I would like this, um, this comes on a timeline, if you close out. On this yet, I, I would like to hear, um, from. On the minute, he's been, all this, so long, now, I know he feels strongly about having that turn lane. We, we surf in and. I would find if people are okay with it, I'd like them to give us a. People, maybe, maybe you. Check it out.
Root twenty-two F for eight, I think it's that time, yeah. Okay, so Henry had a request, Tom, you wanna speak to that? Anybody out there?
He doesn't seem to be at his.
Okay. Well, we have this amendment on the table right now.
I'm here, I'm here. Um, it's a little hard to hear what's, what everybody's saying there. But, uh, what I understand is the, the, the phrase of subject to Caltrans operational and safety standards, or whatever word you picked.
Tom, I was listening to your input on why you feel strongly that there must be a turn lane in the surf in and the, at the Ocean Drive.
Sure, the turn lane is required in the town plan. Uh, it's, we've had serious entry accidents. Uh, are you talking about the left turn lane at Ocean?
Oh, having acknowledged the left turn lane at Ocean's present, it's about this, everything's from the surf in to the south end of the Ocean Drive intersection. Having a, why, with the center turn lane, because that, I think is, uh, uh, Dave would like us to reconsider whether that space should be allocated currently. Just in and the.
Ocean Drive intersection.
Okay, well, you, you recognize that you need a, a central lane on the south side if you have a left turn lane at Ocean. Um, so you need it at least for that, where that island is. Um, south of there, you need it for returning to the businesses. There are eight driveways there, I think Robert said, and something like thirty-two turning combinations in and out of those driveways. Um, by the way, I think John Bauer has done a magnificent job of preparing the Seacliff Center for this. Uh, he's gonna benefit handsomely here, and I wish the Surf Center, I know he will work on a plan of the Surf Center to make it beautiful too. And if he had that on the table, I think a lot of the concerns I'm carrying tonight would be relieved. But as far as that center turn lane, it's, it's required in the town plan. It's required in the county code, it's required in the coastal commission, uh, on the coastal plan. Uh, it's needed by our businesses to support them. Um, I would have preferred to see more landscaping in that, but the engineer said, no, that's about as much as you can get. I accept that. Um, there is substantial landscaping on the other sides of these things. I don't think it's a good idea to close that center lane and restrict access to businesses um, like Mendovine, like the Cobbler's uh, station, like Seacliff Center. Uh, if people can't turn there, they're gonna have to go through town, find a place to turn around and come back. And that's gonna create congestion and the potential for more accidents. Um, if you have cars stopping to make a turn the way they do now, you're gonna raise the potential for more rear end accidents. Um, that's not a good idea. It, make it easy for people to turn, that's the whole point of this, and that's why this has been part of the plan for Streetscape for over thirty years. Um, and it's part of the code, and that's, you know, I, I, I'm fine with the change that Dave suggested for the amendment that, as Robert amended it, uh, and I think you should go ahead and vote on that and leave it up to Caltrans to figure out the operational and safety requirements. But this two lane thing is just not gonna fly. Uh, you'd have three lanes at Ocean, it'd come down to two lanes, you're gonna have rear, potential for rear end accidents. Uh, you're gonna have a harder time turning, it's gonna slow down traffic and build congestion. Uh, it's just not a good idea for any of the businesses there. Um, that's why that center turn lane is there.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Um.
It is, uh, just, uh, for the record, it is, uh, in, uh, looking now at the law, town plan, part of the medicine and coastal element. Specifically called for a two-way left turn lane on Highway one from Old State to Bay, but even further than.
That plan also calls for.
Yeah.
And it calls. Landscaping and sidewalk and stuff that aren't gonna happen. So, that's the general plan, these are generally, these are intended while they are codified and while they're so much they're adopted.
Right.
They are general plan documents that sets forth guidelines.
We need to come back to where we are now, right? And that is the A T P grant acceptance application. It, it would behoove us as citizens of this town if we wanna prosper and, and develop further like John in past meetings, to have a center left turn lane all the way to Ocean. It, it makes sense, we're gonna have, I mean, we're doing this on the backs of the A T P grant. And yet, we gotta also provide for trucks and emergency vehicles and traffic in these areas. This isn't something that people have liked me to say in the past, but I've seen it in many other communities where the center left turn lane gets used temporarily for certain things. And it happens to be that Seacliff, I see a lot of times, uses the shoulders of the highway. Um, it wouldn't surprise me if sometime down the road, the center lane gets used for something other than what it's meant to be, which is a center left turn lane, such as for emergency vehicles, P G N E, something in an emergency. They'll be thankful that we have that there. You, I think somebody else would refer to, if there's an accident on the highway, to be able to maneuver into this center left turn lane. Emergency vehicles, whatever, it's, it's a benefit to our commerce for a lot of.
You can occasionally deliveries too, delivery for trying to go all the way across. They can park in the middle and you're not.
It's not that easy to, it's not that easy for them to go into Seacliff, oh, you know that. Anyplace for that matter. So I see a lot of benefits to this, other than just the pedestrian and bicycling aspect of it. Um, and again, I worry about the additional landscaping, we're gonna have to take care of maintenance wise. And watering purposes. So I would, I would like to leave in standing amendment of motion myself, or one minute, uh, resolution, go ahead, Kevin.
Okay, um, I'll, I'll just try to put my stupid point here, and it, it is on, uh, paragraph three. And my sticking point is additional landscaping via vegetation meeting islands throughout the continuous left turn lane. I have no problem bringing any vegetation that are meeting. I have no problem with a, a center lane, but I have no problem with that idea because we don't have answers. And I don't think Caltrans has the answers, but landscaping in. And I would support David's changes, but I really believe that, uh, we should start taking that that one, that one sentence, additional landscaping via vegetated median islands. Rather than continuous left turn lane of the project, we're talking about the whole thing. We haven't talked about the, uh, island right, right outside the Sherwin Station, we haven't talked about the three islands right by center road, center street. You know, and we're gonna leave it up to Caltrans to see if it's functional, yeah, they'll say it's functional. But is it sustainable, and I have no problem that it's not.
Whether, whether.
Here's a change I think that might.
Well, there's maintain, water, uh, yeah.
How about instead, here's, here's like, you're focusing in on not just the landscaping. So we're talking about, we want Caltrans to put the whole package, whether medium, whether medium, the thing, well. So one way to deal with it is to strike two words. Landscaping via. So that, that, that item reads additional vegetated median islands throughout the continuous left turn lane. Like vegetated island. But they're vegetated or not, I have.
Uh, yeah, I did, well, I, I, I still.
Not about.
That'll be, that'll be my sword that I, that I'm dying, I really.
Separate from the median topic.
Pardon me?
Separated from the median topic.
Um. That, that's, that's just my, we don't have the answers.
How about this?
Sir, so we eliminate.
Let's take away the, let's take away the notion of landscaping and vegetated, the whole point is that they are decorative. So we were to swap out landscaping via vegetated for the word decorative. Would that work for you? And we could include a parent that says, E G, vegetation or, or hardscape.
Yeah.
It's not, there's no, but there's no landscaping in the town plan in the median, really not.
We went to great lengths to find out. It is.
That will change.
We.
And you're not listening.
We went to great lengths to find out in Caltrans if we could vegetate these. And they said yes.
They said yes, they said yes, and accountable, but we're not gonna.
After it's installed. A- after installation, we have.
I, I wouldn't, you know, and that's, that's a non, I, I think, that works here.
Yeah.
Um, I kind of stayed in mind where my position is. I, I don't know if we should, you know, if the council thinks, I don't rate it, not, I totally understand it. Really. Bring it to a, bring it to a closer.
Yeah, so I, I, I knew that we voted on the amendment, uh, as, as previously discussed, uh, specifically referencing functional safety.
We have a second on that amended. Motion and on the res, on the amended resolution.
Yeah, I'll amend.
I'll amend it, okay. Okay, thanks, um, vote, uh, motion second. I think we're done here, um, take a vote.
Well, this is a vote, I'll amend.
On the amendment first, okay. Put in the amendment and then the whole resolution. Right.
Right now, we're voting to amend.
Wait, Melissa. Henry.
Hi.
David.
Yes.
Kevin. Don.
Hi.
Robert.
Hi.
Kevin, just to be clear, you're not voting on a resolution, you're voting on just that amendment.
Right.
So this question, do you think the amendment?
Right, that's. No, that was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Before we, before we move to the next topic though, I'd like to just make a comment. Want to express my thanks to you all for at least tendering portion of shit north of Surf Inn and. Thank you for. Hearing.
Okay, um, so do we have a, a, a motion or the resolution? We have a second.
Right. Didn't you say?
As amended, yeah. You wanna, wanna make that motion again? Second, we can. Second from Henry, okay, take a vote. Melissa. Henry.
Hi.
David.
No.
Kevin. Don.
Hi.
Hi.
Done.
Uh, I'll make a motion to the chair.
Seconded.
Rest of the second.
Melissa. Henry.
Hi.
David.
Yes.
Kevin.
Oh, I'll look at that.
Melissa.
Hi.
Robert. Hi. Okay, thanks everyone.